Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with its standing one nation under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Can someone close the door? That door, please. So this is a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon anyone in attendance if they have a specific question on any matter that is on the Board's action agenda today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come in, as well as a set of any materials on matters that are for decision. Item number two on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our meeting that was held on Thursday, April 14th. And at this time, we entertain any corrections to those minutes. If there are no corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second in.
Okay, all in favor? Item number three, First Selectmen Updates. To update on access Greenwich, which is a application for mobile devices that provides individuals the opportunity to interface with town government on service requests. We've now expanded it to include nuisance complaints to be addressed by the zoning enforcement office, and general information can be accessed by sending questions to the First Selectmen's office. We are in the process of budget review by the RTM. We've attended one committee meeting several weeks ago where we presented responses to questions pertaining to a number of the more sizable initiatives in the budget. That was before the Budget Overview Committee. Next week, we'll be spanning out and going to several of the committee meetings, as well as the district meetings, to answer questions that individuals may have on any of the larger items or any item in the budget. Last evening, I understand, there was a meeting of the Budget Overview Committee in which they brought forth recommendations to make reductions in the capital and operating budgets. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that, but several of our departmental staff did. And a member of the BETI spoke with, and I don't know the particular actions, but I believe they voted to essentially reduce or eliminate capital projects, reduce the operating budget. And unfortunately, what I heard was that they did not entertain any questions or comments from those who were there who had information pertaining to items before the committee for consideration. And in my personal opinion, I think that is not a very good practice, given the importance of those projects and the responsibility that the RTM has to make a fair and balanced judgment on them. So we'll learn more about it, but the initial report's disappointing. One of the things that I'd like to say is that I understand there's an effort to reduce departmental budgets that have exceeded a individual increase, individual department increase of 2%. It's important to note that the town operating budget, the monies associated with providing these services, both personnel and non-personnel, was below 2% and in accordance with the BET guidelines. So when you take into consideration the charter provision, which gives the First Selectmen the responsibility to present a consolidated townwide budget, and the guidelines established by your financing authority stipulates, keep it at 2% or below. And you do that, and then, of course, RTM can, I'm not saying they can't do what they're doing, they can, but the fact is, they're actually reducing budgets that are at zero or negative over the current year. You have to question the rationale. And so that's incumbent upon the people making the motion initiative, but I certainly don't think it sits well with individuals, professionals who work to fulfill guidance as offered by the guidelines and, again, provide the service. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of robust discussion over the next week, and whatever the outcome is, we will certainly manage it. On April 16th, we were invited by the Housing Authority to participate in a groundbreaking for Adams Garden 2 in Old Greenwich. That is a moderate-income housing development off of Riverside, or, excuse me, Sound Beach Avenue Extension. They're building 11 family units there, and we're pleased that that's getting underway. On April 18th, they attended a kickoff event at Richards for Shatterproof, which is a national organization that is focused on assisting those addicted to opioid narcotics and supporting their families. The organization is looking to establish more of a presence in the region, including Greenwich. They're planning a fall event here. On April 19th, I went to the Bruce Museum Board of Trustees meeting. Bruce is in the process of developing and presenting plans for expansion of their facilities. On a lighter note, springtime ritual, I was at the 58th Annual Connecticut Daffodil Show and New England Regional Show that was presented by the Greenwich Daffodil Society at Christ Church. Interestingly, this is a very interactive event in terms of people can submit their daffodils. Young people were encouraged to participate, and for 58 years, they've been doing this. It was quite nice to see. On April 21st, I went to the Western Connecticut Council of Government meeting up in Ridgefield. The meeting focused a good portion of its attention on the activities that are happening in Hartford, in the reduction of the educational cost-sharing funding. The group agreed to send a consolidated letter to the Governor expressing concerns about the reductions, also taking issue, of course, with the timing. Some communities have already advanced or adopted their budgets, others are in the process, so it's made it very difficult for planning purposes to have the funds eliminated at this time. The Greenwich Lions Club was holding simultaneously, same date and time, as the WestCog meeting, their annual Dr. John A. Clark Award luncheon, in which Sergeant Mark Zuccarella was recognized as the Department's Officer of the Year for his service and dedication to Special Victims section. That section of the Police Department investigates the most serious crimes committed against our most vulnerable residents. Selectmen Tonner was in attendance and helped present a proclamation from the state legislators, as well as the entire delegation was on budget. So you were the entire government that day, the local and state, and thank you.
It was great.
On April 23rd, the Cosco Fire Police Patrol held their annual benefit at Greenwich Country Day School, where former Selectman Paul B. Hicks III was honored for his support of the organization. He was presented with a proclamation declaring last Saturday as Paul B. Hicks Day III in Greenwich. Also, taking place at the same time was the Greenwich Symphony Orchestra's annual gala at the Greenwich Country Club, where Davida Strackbine, who chaired our 375th anniversary celebration, was honored for her contributions to the town, its history, and its incorporation of period-specific music into the program last year. So that was the tie-in to the symphony. On April 25th, there was a power outage in Old Greenwich. Specifically, the Tomac Avenue substation was damaged and offline from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, when Eversource hooked up, Eversource hooked up a mobile emergency substation to serve 1,100 customers. Also attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club, where the Junior League of Greenwich partnered with teens to redecorate and spruce up the teen room. A supporter of the club, former New York Nick, John Starks, was there to support the Boys and Girls Club and provide the kids uplifting experience. On April 26th, I was down in Byram at the Soul Call Club for a standoff for the Spirit Zone 2, which they sent two teams of cheerleader gymnasts to the national competition. There are only two teams from Connecticut who will be participating, and they come from Greenwich. So we were very proud of them and gave them a flag of the town so they could, you know, wave it to show that they're from our great town. Yesterday, we had a meeting of the First Selectmen's Economic Advisory Committee, and they're working on the final changes in program scheduled for in May, which is Developing Solutions to Connecticut's Economic Tsunami. CNBC economist Larry Kudlow will moderate the discussion, May 22nd, at the Riverside Yacht Club, with State Senator Scott France attending, Yankee Institute President Carol Platt-Labeau, among others. We are actually going to be reaching out today to see if we can get either House Speaker Brendan Sharkey or State Senate Majority Leader Martin Ludy to come. And again, the focus really of the program is on what are the solutions to the situation we find ourselves in, not so much to lament the problem. I think everybody knows the problem in spades. It's more, what are the solutions? Sort of events coming up, the Greenwich Chamber of Commerce is holding its annual Business and Culinary Showcase from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. That's tomorrow. Oh, excuse me, is that tomorrow or tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight. So that's the 20th, tonight. Tomorrow, Friday, April 29th, is the YWCA Stand Against Racism Day. We are participating as an organization. I believe the Superintendent of Schools, as well as some other officials, Senator Blumenthal will be in attendance, and I think you guys will be there, right? That's at 10. And then, this weekend, I just want to remind residents that the Greenwich Police Department is holding its semi-annual Drug Takeback Day from 8:00 AM to noon, Saturday, April 30th. You can dispose of any unwanted prescription in over-the-counter drugs, no questions asked. Every year, residents drop off thousands of pounds of unwanted, unused drugs. If you can't make it Saturday, the Department has a drop-off kiosk in the lobby of headquarters that's open 24/7. Finally, residents will be able to put more green in Greenwich with the Clean and Green Semi-Annual Paper Shredding Day, which will be held from 9:30 to 12:15 Saturday, April 30th, in the Island Beach parking lot. They're charging $2 per box, or two cans of tuna fish or fruit for each box. So cash or cans, and you decide. I believe that concludes the updates. Again, of the most importance over the next week is the budget meetings, the committee meetings. I certainly would like to enlist the support of my colleagues in talking to any member of the RTM, the districts, specifically on our initiatives related to life safety, education, and quality of life issues. You know, being fiscally responsible doesn't just mean cutting things, it means making investments in things so that you ensure the value of the town and its residency. And I think it's important to think that way. I know everyone said, "I'm a fiscal conservative." I'm a fiscal conservative, but what does that really mean? It's not just reducing, it's strategically applying finite resources to things that you believe have a value to the town of Greenwich and its residents. And I will continue to advocate that view because I believe that, and I hope that we all can agree that there's a balanced approach to all of this, and that simply withdrawing and doing nothing isn't going to sustain or enhance residency in Greenwich. We have to make very strategic investments and continue to make Greenwich a desirable place for people to come and live, work, and raise their families. Okay, old business. We have no old business today. New business. I'm pleased to welcome John Eddy, who is the Chairman of the Representative Town Meetings Appointments Committee, as well as a member of the District Eight delegation. John has really taken the reins of the Appointments Committee with great energy and enthusiasm and a strong desire to improve the process by which we go about not only identifying and recruiting the candidates to serve on the Boards and Commissions, but also to see how we can better align the terms and the manner in which they come before the committee so that it produces a better outcome. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to him because he has, on his own accord, undertaken a very thorough analysis of our Board and Commissions and is seeking our support or interest in proceeding with some changes. So, welcome.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the introduction. Reiterating what Mr. Tessie said, my purpose here today is to seek the tacit support of the Board of Selectmen in a proposal I have to change the term-ending dates of the agencies that are appointed by the RTM. As you know, some agencies are both nominated and appointed by the RTM, some by the Board of Selectmen, and the majority of them are nominated by the Board of Selectmen and appointed by the RTM. What I'm hoping to accomplish here is to change the term-ending date for all of these, which is, and generally all of these, which is March 31st, to spread them out to three times across the year for a couple of reasons. First is, right now, with March 31st being the only ending date for the ones that are associated with the RTM, in an average year, in an average, let's say, first year of a term of the RTM, which all saw the first term of the administration of the Board of Selectmen, there are 57 appointments to be made by March 31st, in theory. Now, the town has a good way of addressing this in that members of Boards and agencies are authorized to serve until replaced, but we have as a situation where a lot of work that could be done, spread over the year, is confined and bottlenecked into a period of time that has a number of negative effects that I think can be easily remedied. The difficulty is that the high number of meetings, I'm going to read a little bit from the second page of what I have right here. "The high number of meetings required in a relatively short period of time for the Appointments Committee at the beginning of a term prevents some members of the Appointments Committee from participating consistently in the process. This, in turn, diminishes the ability of the Committee to perform its diligence, manage its division of labor, and operate in a consistent manner." And to emphasize what I said, "The number of immediate and urgent call items at the beginning of each even-numbered year, which is the beginning of elected term, makes it problematic for new members to educate themselves on the role and issues of the appointed agencies on which they are called to advise their districts and the RTM as a whole." So the thrust behind this is to help the RTM's Appointment Committee, help the RTM do a better job with respect to appointments. Now, what this requires with respect to changing the term dates is amendments to the town charter, in most cases. And because these amendments are to the town charter, it's not something that can be initiated by the RTM, it needs to be initiated by the Board of Selectmen. What I have in front of you here is just an overview, some of which I've just read to you, a listing of, on page three, of how I would suggest that these dates be changed. And what I've put together is something that benefits the RTM and the Appointments Committee, the Board of Selectmen. My find that this works well for you, and it may not, so it's something that we need to take a look at. On page four, and the larger attachment that I've included so you can actually read it, is a copy of a spreadsheet that specifically identifies what the current, over the next 10 or 11 years, what the distribution of labor would be for the Board of Selectmen and the RTM, if we keep the appointment term-ending dates the way they are right now, and if we change them, how that will, what the distribution will look like, both for the RTM, the Board of Selectmen, and the individual committees of the RTM. So that's informational. I think it shows pretty clearly that what I'm suggesting is an improvement, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be improved more.
John, what's the consensus of the body or the RTM itself?
Well, this is the chicken and the egg question that we have right here. I was presented with the question, is it easier to go to the RTM first and to suggest this, or is it easier to come to the Board of Selectmen? If I go to the RTM first, what I anticipate is, we're really not interested in taking a look at this unless we know that the Board of Selectmen would be willing, or at least at this point, not against considering these changes. The Appointments Committee is very much for this, they haven't voted formally on it, but they're very much for it. What I would anticipate, the process being, is that I would ask for your support today in principle. On page 10, I have a copy of a proposed resolution, exactly what the resolution might look like with the changes. If I received today or sometime in the next couple of months assent from the Board of Selectmen, I could bring this back to the Appointments Committee. The Appointments Committee could vote on the resolution specifically to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, if the Board of Selectmen decided that it was a good thing to do. They would present the resolution, amend it as needed, and present that resolution to the RTM. This way, it's on the RTM's agenda, and the RTM will act upon it. I would suggest, I would, I'm sorry, I would guess, knowing how the RTM works, that the RTM would probably have some amendments to make to it, and, but I would guess it will also be accepted, at which point, it would have to come back to the Board of Selectmen again for a final approval before it would be made law, so to speak. And so my goal would be to have this process completed by December and have the term changes indicated in the proposal take effect January 1st, 2018. It's strictly administrative, it's strictly a way of dividing up the labor, and from the perspective of the Appointments Committee, not only does it distribute the load throughout the year, but it also allows the, it takes away a burden on the Appointments Committee that really prevents it in the beginning of the year from performing the organizational activities and planning for the year that I think it would benefit greatly from. So I can read what I've got here, you can, I can answer any questions. I'd be grateful if you took a look at this, and maybe we can talk about it after you've had a chance to digest it.
Sure. Just curious, you had the opportunity, last evening, the Nominations Advisory Committee held a workshop.
Yes.
I didn't, I don't, I didn't report on that. And the purpose behind the workshop is to give people who are serving on the Boards the background and nuts and bolts of how to run a Board meeting, FOI compliance, but you were one of the, really the featured speaker, and I'm curious to know if they had any opinion, since they're the group that, you could classify them, they're sort of the executive recruiting arm of the Board, of this Board, so they're trying to produce candidates, what they thought.
So any questions from the people who were there, from the nominated committee in particular?
The committee in particular, if they had any thought or...
I did present this last night, I didn't think it was really appropriate in light of what was being, I had planned to, but I didn't, I sort of changed my presentation to line up with the character of the meeting, as I was the last person who was speaking. But I did speak with Carolyn Stevens about this, and she did indicate to me a couple of times that she felt that this was a good thing. As I indicate in here, one of the things that would be the responsible thing to do for the Appointments Committee is to, you know, get more input from all of the stakeholders. What I see the tacit approval of the Board of Selectmen allowing is discussion of this to happen in the RTM, which is basically a reactive body, and, you know, I've learned that until we get something on the agenda, it doesn't really receive the attention that it might otherwise. So it's, this is a strategic move in me coming before you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yep. I admire your tenacity and the quality of what you presented is really impressive.
Don't look at it too close, then, okay?
But I mean, essentially, in the thumbnail, you're really looking to evenly distribute the term expiration so that everyone in the process doesn't have to work against a singular crunch period, which basically we pass. So right now, we're sitting with approximately 15 or so Board and Commission term expirations, which essentially, this board, the onus is on us to get done by May 20th, which is the cutoff for the RTM for June, and see to that they're fully staffed. Now, in some cases, there are incumbents that want to serve, but in several, there are, there are vacancies. So it would, I mean, speaking individually as a member of the Board, it would provide greater degree of balance in the workflow.
The ability to plan over the course of a term, yeah.
In particular, you know, the Board is comprised of two part-time members who have other jobs, in some cases, over the course of the history of the Board of Selectmen, and so to interview the number of people in a compressed period, I think, could be challenging, and giving them the whole year to do it, you know, to have a little bit, it makes sense. So, again, John, I think our, I think our position right now is we're interested, I think everyone wants to read it, and maybe we can, you know, move this up to old business next meeting or a meeting thereafter, and give you a formal sense of what we would, what we would like to do.
That would be great. I appreciate your listening, I appreciate your support, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Thanks, sir.
We've also got these items, I'll send to you in PDF format, which has links to the town code on the MuniCode site, and I'll send you a copy of the spreadsheet, which you can play with to see how things might change. You'll love the suggestions that I had. Thank you very much.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you. So, okay, so that's the first item under new business. The second item is a request from Selectman Marzullo that was made on April 22nd, which was to place on the agenda, under new business, "New Lebanon Soil," is how it was referred to. Since that time, we've had an opportunity to try to formulate information points. So before I turn the floor over to Selectman Marzullo, I want to just give some comments on what we were able to do in the intervening period. So one is, the Health Department is here today to provide brief comments on the recent unauthorized soil testing, soil testing allegedly taken on grounds of Western Middle School. So the Director of Environmental Services, Michael Long, will address that in a moment. While the town owns the property, school property is controlled by the Board of Education for education purposes, therefore, the school system will ultimately determine next steps. However, various town departments, Public Works, Law, Health, Conservation, P&amp;Z, Parks and Rec, Board of Education, Office of First Selectmen, in addition to outside legal counsel and environmental engineers, AECOM, have been working collaboratively to develop a path forward for the town. Three action items are currently in process. The first one being that the Board of Education Administration is going to be sending a letter to the individual who collected the unauthorized soil samples, requesting more detailed information regarding the sample methodology, boring locations, depth of samples, how sample locations were restored, chain of custody, and the complete lab report. Two, in addition, the Law Department will be sending a letter to the previous-mentioned individuals stating concerns of unauthorized samples and informing the individual they do not have a right to disturb school property and do not want the individual or others to conduct similar behavior in the future. Lastly, the town is planning a development of a frequently asked question for future BOs meetings in May to inform the Selectmen in public on current soil testing protocols the town uses for projects, as well as basic information on soil in naturally occurring elements in soil. Since this is Selectman Marzullo's agenda item, we will collect the questions received during these discussions, and hopefully have a response at future meetings as to what comes up. Again, as you know, or may not know, under the town charter, any Selectman is enabled to place an item on the agenda within... to place an item on the agenda within five business days of the meeting, so long as the subject is germane to the power and duties of the board. Before I have Drew talk further about his request, I would like the Director of Environmental Services, Michael Long, just to say a few words. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Based on the information we have to date, we can't make any decision...
Is that on mic? I can't...
Hello, hello?
There we go, better.
A little closer. Based on what we have received so far, we can't make any decision on what the story is, but based on the letter that the Board of Ed will be sending, we'll see what information comes back to make a determination. That's essentially it.
You're free to ask questions.
Just in terms of clarification, I think this, to me, is no longer, and I think you would agree, that it's no longer a New Lebanon module issue. It's now a Western Junior High School slash town issue. I think that's important to point out, because once again, I don't want to give the impression that what was found, not found, somehow is connected inadvertently, because the kids have to be housed there. But this is a piece of property that extends well beyond the modules over at New Lebanon. What we know is, you know, what we know if we, until verified, I should say, what we know, the soil was tested, one would say illegally or not, but what we know, and once again, until verified, that some have tested positive for arsenic, et cetera. So we are now at a point where I think we have an obligation, in my opinion, to further conduct our own tests, to dispute their tests, and to remediate if something is found. So what I'm hearing is, I'm still confused about the next steps, what we're going, because there is now a perception out there that we have to now combat that there are toxins on that field. How they were obtained is a different issue, I understand, but if we believe, or when we verify, and if that is true, testing has to be conducted. I don't know if it's going to be the Board of Education's responsibility to say test, or the Board of Selectmen, some on the Building Committee feel it should be the Board of Selectmen. I plan today on making a motion that testing begins to combat minimally the tests that we've received by them. So where are we with that, Wayne, or anybody?
Well, from my perspective, the information we have is incomplete and not valid. So we need to get information to see exactly what the letter that Peter mentioned, you know, where it was done, how deep it was done, you know, all that information can provide clarity to what the results...
But wouldn't we want to do our, independent of whether or not we think it's complete, or independent of whether or not we think it's valid or not, shouldn't we be doing our own tests simultaneously anyway now at this point? I don't think it matters at this point whether or not theirs is incomplete. I don't think it matters now where they've tested. I think they tested, and we can deal with that part of it, but now I think we have an obligation to conduct our own tests.
Again, it depends on the information that they're, from that testing that was done.
But my point is, I don't think that should be the driving factor. We have to take control over this now. We shouldn't be waiting for, we're spending a lot of time trying to verify their tests and trying to find out where they test, and I think we're doing, we need to take control of this now.
Well, I think there's a broader issue in terms of coming back to the governance. And then there's, coming back to the protocol, I think the town has had a consistent policy, as we heard back when Mr. Manelli was here for the poll, that the town has historically always tested properties whereby they seem to have an indication they might have an issue, such as when we built the new public safety complex. We knew, in fact, that facility was a former automotive business. And so naturally, having oil tanks and so forth, they went about conducting the tests, and they remediated and so forth. Again, I think that that has been a practice long before Greenwich High School emerged on the scene or the other places. But I do think that the validity of the tests are in question, and again, it's up to the project folks to determine whether or not they necessitate a test. I don't think we should just arbitrarily say, well, we're just going to test everything, because there's costs, and frankly, there's, to me, there's an illogical element of this. Again, as I've said publicly, I think there's other agendas at play for which, you know, we've seen play out elsewhere, and it could easily become a discussion on, well, okay, let's start testing public property. But you know what? I think your property should be tested, your private property. I'm going to come on your property, I'm going to start testing your property. Well, what business do I have to come on to your property? Why am I picking on your property versus your property? So we really have to take a step back and think logically about it, and I think today's a good starting point. And by having you here, Michael, in telling us a little bit about what you don't know, because in terms of it's not a complete sample, not knowing precisely where it was done, we have some unknowns. I do want to recognize, we do have represented here today the school facilities folks, Ron Matten, thank you, and Jim Ricky, who's the Managing Director of Operations, the Board Chair, Laura Erickson, Vice Chair, Barbara O'Neil, and Claire Kilgellin from the New Lebanon Building Committee.
But the unknowns are not going to be known until testing is...
Right. Well, one thing, one thing that the information that the Board of Ed is requesting can provide is if the sampling was done under the turf, as far as exposures go, turf is an acceptable shield to prevent an exposure. So that's one aspect that we would look at. So if the turf's not getting disturbed, then that's what we would look at.
But we're relying on an outside source that we question whether or not it was legal to do so. I think at this point, the town, once again, has to become, you know, has to become proactive now. This now is, we're reacting now, and we need to take, we need to go into the proactive stage right now. So I recommend we begin testing.
From a health perspective, it really depends on what the information that...
Well, we know that there's, but we know there's arsenic, or we could assume. I mean, whether or not that's proven to be completely false, that's one thing.
Right. And that's, again, part of the request the Board of Ed's?
From a source that obtained this illegally.
Correct.
This makes, this is not good governance, how we're doing this.
I don't know if it's not good governance. I mean, again, getting back to, we're dealing with an unsubstantiated allegation, because again, we don't know the true origins of the source. So the source is in question. But unfortunately, and I take a little onus on the media, that doesn't always present a balanced view of it. So as I said the other day, if you play word association, oh, toxins were found, or contaminants. Well, to me, contaminants, toxins, people make a huge leap to health, cancer, death. Well, as we know, we don't have before us the scientific analysis, nor do we have the regulatory requirements or definitions of what substantiates a particular grading. And so again, I think the goal today is to develop that so that when we do have further conversations, we're having them based upon real data, what the laws are. I don't know that. That's what I desire to find out, in terms of how many milliliter, milligrams, or kilograms is at a risk level, how much is a non-risk. I mean, those are all things that we hear about but need to be documented so that each of us can talk to our constituents and say, you know, the residential standard for this is this, it came in at this. Basically, what you just said is if it's below the surface, and you know, it's a non-issue, rather than whip everybody up into affair thee well, and, oh, the contaminants are found, we have to get the kids off the field, and create unnecessary hysteria when there's no need to. So I think we have to be really wise about how we approach it. And I'm not, in no way, I just want to be clear, I'm not criticizing Drew, because I think he's very passionate about this. I just think we need to know more, and the way we know more is to work with our professionals, and we mentioned, to get this so that, as I said, we could have a more meaningful discussion at subsequent meetings. I just...
But to get that information, we have to test. We're going to be relying on information based on somebody who took it upon themselves to test.
We're not relying on them.
Well, then how else would we get the other information?
We're questioning what they found, and we're trying to make sure that that, in fact, is true.
Yeah. All right, so I'm going to, Mr. Chairman... Did you have anything, Laura? I mean, in fairness to you, I might just want to say, in fairness to the Chair of the Board of Education and the board itself, the item was presented on the agenda as it was submitted. So if there was any misunderstanding in terms of, it was referred to as New Lab, I think, in the context of the modular question, that's how, but it's really the location being Western. So in fairness, but I just wanted to give you a chance, because it is a facility under the ages of the schools, and I know that you've had to do a lot of work to educate your school community what's happened.
Right. And I first want to say that I think the Board of Ed Administration has been working very collegially and cooperatively with the town agencies that are relevant. So I appreciate that joint cooperation. You know, I think the Department of Health also opined on the fields, whether or not they could remain open, and the answer was yes, they could, because as Mr. Long said, there is turf on the top there. And I think we want to be really careful how we proceed. I think we want to be very prudent. But I don't want to proceed with testing only because this report has come to light. I think it's a really bad precedent, and I think we want to be really careful with that. I want to learn more about the report, which is the course of action that we're taking now. I know there's been discussions at the Building Committee about when we should test, whether we should test. The Building Committee took a vote on a motion to seek a state modification of a building code, so that perhaps the soil would not need to be disturbed for the modular classrooms. They weren't saying, we're not going to test at some point, but they're looking for options and for flexibility. So that was the latest action by the Building Committee on the modular. So I think everyone is proceeding prudently and cautiously, because the information, as Mr. Long said, and as we know, is not verifiable at this point. So, you know, but for that report, should we rush in and test? I think we want to be really careful about the message that sends.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I suppose I'll get a second on this, but I do want to make a motion to begin testing in light of what we know verifiably, once it's verified, it's going to be, in my opinion, my opinion only, that there will be arsenic found. That's my opinion only. So I think we should be testing now to combat and not relying on something that's not substantiated. And the only way we're going to know for sure is when we conduct our town tests, so we can also combat the perception issue that there's toxins there, or not there. So my motion's going to be that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the Board of Education to begin testing over at Western immediately.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor made by Mr. Marzullo for the Board of Selectmen to recommend to the Board of Education to begin, presumably, environmental testing immediately. At Western Middle School, where? I mean, I just want to be clear for a minute, where you want them to test?
I'll work with the Board of Health on that. I, you know, I don't know. I think it's one parcel we found out, so I think everything's going to have to be tested, I believe.
Okay, so the motion is for the Board of Selectmen to recommend to the Board of Education to begin testing at Western Middle School with further delineation made by, you said the Board of Health? Is that right?
Yeah.
Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion is not advanced. Again, I want to reiterate that I think there's a very clear direction established, and again, incorporating all of the various resources that are available to the town and are part of the town. And again, I think to reiterate, I know that the media has been desiring to whip up a sort of a, are you going to do this to this person? The fact is, they'll receive communications. The communications will certainly be made public, and they will reaffirm what is prescribed and not prescribed for people in their activities, and what they can do on school or town property. And I'll let the public be the judgment of whether there's sound judgment to violate the recommendations. So there's no other discussion on this. We'll move to appointments and nominations. We have, I forgot how, we had well over 15 at the last meeting.
There's one gentleman there that we've interviewed, well, I interviewed anyhow, Frank O'Connor.
Right.
He, because he's a Republican, does that present a problem at this point in time? He would go out as an alternative?
Yeah. So Mr. Sullivan's moved up, Mr. Sertelman's dropping off, and Mr. Rodekazinski exists. So my recollection is, did we move someone? I'm trying to remember if we moved someone...
There are only two that are up there right now.
Because Mr. Vecchiola is interested in... Let's see this. So they're three, no, they're four-year terms, so how could it be 19? So 16 and 16, both terms would be, both terms that we would be filling would be 20. So these, one says 20, one says 19, that they gave us. So we could put both, if you think. I mean, I know Mr. Vecchiola is interested. I spoke with him, because initially, we had asked him about whether or not, and he said we needed an attorney, and preferably a Democrat on the CBA, and he said he would do it.
I could support John.
So I just want to make sure, though, that we get the term right, and that we didn't name someone, but my recollection is foggy. We had, we moved Sullivan, he moved up, then we moved Sertelman, and he withdrew. So I don't recall nominating someone for this previously.
I don't either.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, I will move John Vecchiola. So I'd like to move the nomination of John Vecchiola to the alternate member position on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring 3/31/20. For those who are not familiar with Mr. Vecchiola, he is an attorney practicing in the town of Greenwich, although I believe he's been sort of winding down, he's not as active as he has been. He served on the Greenwich Board of Education for a number of years. He is a former member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee and has intergol knowledge of the town and its... and has intergol knowledge of the town and its land use practices. Do you second it?
I do.
So it's been seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All those in favor?
Aye.
So let's just say he went to, he went into the Sertelman slot. So we still would have one more. And now, the thing is, I don't know, Sullivan was approved yet?
Sullivan.
Wayne Sullivan was moved up to take Anella Ram Charandis's place.
Right.
And I think, who is it that they're holding over? I have to look at my call.
It's not in, her notes is that it's waiting for the.
There was a question of whether they interviewed them. I'm trying to remember the, if you, do you want to move him or wait till the next meeting, Frank?
We can, we can wait.
Just to check that, okay. And then on the, we had an email, so on coming to the Harbor Commission, we had nominated Mr. Carlson, Donald Carlson, to the place currently held by Mr. Kinnear. Mr. Kinnear had reevaluated his decision and would like to remain and fulfill his term. So we would have to take up a motion to reconsider our nomination of Mr. Carlson for the regular spot. Okay? We have to take that up.
Okay.
And then we would have to rescind that, and I would move to name him to the alternate spot.
So moved.
Okay. So it's been moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So at this time, I would move to nominate Donald Carlson for the position as an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring 3/31/19.
So.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
So that completes that one. And it's up to you. I mean, do you want to do the housing now?
For who?
Sam.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Okay. So moving to the Housing Authority, we are looking at a reappointment, and this is an appointment. Let's get to that page. Okay. So Sam Romeo has been serving since 2011. He is coming up on his completion of his first term, and at this time is there a motion to reappoint him for another five years, which would be term expiring 7/31/2021.
Yes. So moved.
Seconded.
So it's been moved by Mr. Toner, seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Let me see, there was one more. I just can't remember. Can you see them? One, two, three. Parks and Rec, PG, BCC, the. Social Services, are we going to, that's the one that we, they were asked us. I knew there was someone called, Barbara Nolan called. Do we, are we ready to do anything with Social Services? We had three names. We had.
Jeff Medina, Annalise Nash Fernandez, and they're set, we're set to interview them.
Okay.
Next week or the week after.
Okay, so.
Two weeks, yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait. So we, we could just check the 20th, I think that's the, because we really want to get these done, because we're getting calls from the chairs, like Barbara Nolan and Dr. Berry, wondering when are we filling it. So, okay, that's the one that I was thinking I got a call on, I couldn't remember. And then Health, we have two to interview. I have their resumes, right? We have, yeah, we have two spots open. Dr. Franco's not continuing and.
Again, we have.
And Dr. Elio.
Six, Santu and Dr. Armstrong are coming in for interviews.
Yeah, today, right, or?
Yeah.
And the same thing, we're seeing P&amp;Z, we're seeing Margarita, or at least I am, Margarita.
Margarita's in today.
And Victoria, so we could do that.
So by the next time, we could do like three, four, or five.
We can get them done, because ideally, we could be done by May, by June. Okay. I don't think there's anything.
No.
That's it.
So there's no other items under appointments and nominations. I do believe we had updates in executive sessions on some pending litigation, so if we can have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussion on some pending litigation, and expect the town attorney to be with us. Moved and seconded, right? You second it?
Yep.
11:05.